Okay, the meeting is being recorded.
Okay, so we're here for the library liaison meeting. And we, this is about library operations in particular. And I'll turn it over to you, Linda.
Sure. We have Lisa on, hi Lisa. And I did send you there with, with a meeting notice. Lisa provided us with a line item operating document. It's a two-page document where she listed the line items. Within that, I believe at the very top, you see her revenue line, which is the town support of the library. She's coming in at 2% year over year, which is within guidance as set by the Board of Finance. And now we'll pass it over to you, Lisa.
I'm not entirely sure what, what it is where you, you would like from me. The, the, the agenda was just to discuss the budget. So we've all got the budget in front of us. Is, is there a format you'd like us to? You know, I'm not sure what, what you're wanting here.
Just walk, just walk them through the operating budget. If there are any, any changes or?
Okay. So, so I did send through one with the, the six-month actuals. I think you have, the one that was sent out did not have that, but we do have those. We got them from our accountant recently. So you can see that we are also pushing up our fundraising expectations in our income section as, as high as we have ever done before. We're pushing up our fundraising on events up 7.7% for the year ahead. And we're pushing up our direct mail solicitation up 2.5% for a total of 680 on those two, which you can see there on the columns eight and nine. You'll also see that in our other income lines as a result of COVID. Well, you're not seeing what I'm seeing because I've got the, this, the, this year's actuals, but book sale income goes to zero since last year. Fines and charges is, is de minimis and will continue to be until we can get past the, the COVID quarantine regulations. Obviously, we have zero income from meeting rooms, copies and fax this year. And so trying to anticipate how those will come back in the next year is a bit difficult. And so, you know, I'm, I'm budgeting 15,000 for meeting room copies and faxes, which is only slightly off what we had hoped for this year. That presumes that, you know, July 1st or sometime soon after there, we are operating in some sort of environment where people want to come back into buildings and be in enclosed rooms. And, and I just, you know, my crystal ball is no better than anyone else's. Onto the expense side. Having agreed with the town a few years ago that we were going to try to get our salaries to a place where they were competitive so that we could continue to recruit and retain good quality staff. In order to make this budget work, we, we've only put through at 1.6 on the salaries and staffing. We've reduced the slightly our contractor compensation. Our 403B obviously continues to go up every time we have retirements. People have come off the old town defined benefit scheme and gone on to our 403B match. We're almost at the stage, we're getting close to the stage where almost everyone is off the town's pension and on to our 403B match. So that continues to go up. Payroll taxes obviously are a function of salary. We've taken down our collection spend. We've taken down our program spend. Both of these are obviously to make the budget work. It's not that we don't have a need to spend that money. But in order to make this, this, everything come together, that's one of the few areas we have any discretion. The rest, there's not a lot of, there's not much of, of too much import in here. Looking down. Cleaning services, I expect to go up again. As you can see, it's not a very large amount, but clearly in this COVID environment, we are putting on more part-time cleaning help. And I imagine we'll be continuing to do that for some time. So that, and that's also a 2% increase. It's not a significant increase.
And Lisa, maybe I'll, I'll chime in here. Bob Butman, Board Chair of the Library. Every year, we, you know, Lisa manages the library year after year to essentially a flat to 2% increased budget. So with that assumption, you know, we have to make ends meet. And really, on the revenue side, the only variables that we, we've had here are, you know, our fundraising and our annual fund numbers. And so they're a plug to try and get us to the expense side. And on the expense side, the major variable is compensation, right? And the compensation's gone up slightly year after year. And since I've been Board Chair for six years, really, what we've tried to do is get the compensation and the salaries for the staff up to a competitive level relative to our peer groups in Fairfield County. And when I started, you know, we were at the bottom of the aisle. We're now sort of in the middle of the pack. And, but I think we have competitive salaries and that's been our goal really is to get them to a level where we can sustain a high quality of talent. But really, I mean, if you look at most of the budget on both the revenue expense side, there's just not a lot of flexibility or variability in it. So we, we take the 2% number and then basically plug in our, our revenues to meet the goals. That make sense?
Yeah. I, how do you meet the goal not having that cash around for an extraordinary expense?
Okay, so, well, that's an interesting question.
This doesn't show our capital, yeah.
Doesn't show our capital. We have a capital account and an endowment. And so on the capital side, we are required really to set aside per town a quarter of a million dollars to meet any kind of capital expense. And we've done that every year. So the first 50,000 that the town grants us in July gets set aside into that capital.
First 50,000 of fundraising.
Fundraising, excuse me.
Town money does not go, never has and does not go into maintaining or, or repairing the building. It's the first 50,000 of fundraising.
So that 50 grand goes to meeting the, the 250 that we keep in capital, give or take, in case of emergencies, one way or the other, Neil.
Yeah. Got it.
That's a longstanding policy.
Yes. Other questions?
I have a que, I have a question. What is the total number of part-time and full-time employees that you have?
I think at the moment, we have 24 full-time employees and 16 part-time employees. I, I would have to, I would have to double check to, to make sure I'm giving you the exactly specific number. But I think that's what it is right now.
You said 20 full-time?
24 full-time, 16 part-time.
Got it. Thank you.
And Lisa, how, going forward, how do you, we saw about, going forward, how do you predict what those operating expenses will be? You know, we, you, you obviously don't have the final specs on the whole building and everything coming up. But there, you gotta get a placeholder number, I guess. What was your philosophy in setting that? Or have you said?
So, yeah, I think, I think it's a complicated question, Neil. So we understand that town is not interested in changing their level of contribution to the library's operations beyond the threshold that gets set every year by the Board of Finance for the operations. And we work, we work with that number. So whatever you, every year, you, you set a threshold for, for the increase that town will have or, or lack of increase, whatever it is. And then that gets filtered down to us and, and we make our budget work according to what you indicate to us beforehand will be the, the amount that we have to work with from, from the town grant. So I guess I say that first to set the stage, right?
Yep, ready for the show.
So, so therefore, I can only assume that we need to manage to a budget, at least vis a vis the town's contribution, that looks very like what we've received over the past 15 or 20 years in terms of its net change. So what other sources of income do I have? Fundraising, we will have some rental incomes and maybe some lease income coming off this new building. We've designed it in such a way to create new revenue streams for ourselves. So we hope in the, in the first few years after having this building that we'll have some more money coming in to be able to grow. But until that money does, any growth can't happen. So on day one, the expectation is our costs are in line with what our costs have been over the past five to 10 years with, with increases that are fixed costs, things like IT, things like electricity, et cetera, et cetera. What I think you might be getting at is heating and cooling, right? This is a much more efficient building. It's a building of relatively the same square footage, only slightly larger, but it's a much, much more efficient building than what we've got today. So heating and cooling costs, I hope will go down. On the other hand, we have a lot more usable public space within that square footage. So cleaning costs will go up. I perceive that we'll have an offset there. We have relatively the same amount of landscaping to, of, of land to look after, both before and after, but it looks different. At the moment, we've got bits and pieces of garden area all around the building. In the new building, we will have a children's garden at the back and we will have most all of the rest of the landscaping in one area. We've already had some preliminary estimates from our landscape company about what the difference will be. And that will probably go up. On the other hand, if we have lease income for the cafe, hopefully that will offset any increased costs on landscaping. But the amount of, of land, the square footage of garden we have to look after is virtually the same, right? So it's, it's not getting bigger. So, so when I try to.
Is, is that two-thirds of our budget, which is compensation, won't change in the sense that, you know, we are not planning for additional hiring just because we're moving into the new building. Lisa's gonna manage the library with the same staff she has in the current building. And until we develop additional sources of revenue, that's, that's our expectation.
Yeah.
You've said, you have said in the past, I think, that you think you can manage the building, in fact, with the same level of staff. So adding to staff, you may be top grading by improving the people that you hire. That would be a cost difference. But in, in absolute numbers, do you think you'd have to go make a change?
Yeah, so I, I think that's, again, that's a very complicated and nuanced question and it gets to service levels, right? So we, we absolutely, and I have said very clearly and very publicly that we will operate this building with the level of staffing we have today. And that is based on what we started with, which is an expectation that the major source of our operating costs, which is from the town, is going to continue at the similar rate to what we've had in the past, which keeps up with inflation and fixed costs. So therefore, there is no option but to continue to staff it at the same levels. Now, as Bob said, over time, if we can find further sources of revenue and it seems appropriate that the community would like a higher level of service, then we would invest in either higher quality staff or more staff, more part-time staff particularly, o- over time. But we have no plans to do that at this stage. Our plan is the expectation that we go into a new building with similar levels of operating income with inflation as we have today. Therefore, we must operate it within those constraints.
Chris, there's also operating efficiencies that we garner when we move into the new building. Clearly, you know, on the book collection side, a lot of automation, things of that sort are gonna help us. So, you know, there might be some shifting of resources. But, you know, in terms of total staffing levels, you know, day one, we don't anticipate adding any new staffing. Now, as Lisa said, new programming, new, new services that we might provide down the road, that, that could open up additional levels of staffing, you know, if, if we deem it, you know, economically feasible.
But, but I think it's important to, 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 based on what Bob just said, we will have mechanized materials handling. This allows us to redeploy a, a number of our part-time staff to frontline customer service. And this is the major way how we're going to make sure that even though our, we have increased public area size, the square footage for public areas is increased, we have enough staff to do that, given our existing staffing levels.
Lisa, do you have a projection over the next few years? Let's say five years of the projected expenses and revenue that you will be, that you have based in order to assert that you will make up for the difference?
You, you're talking about the, the document I sent you last summer? I haven't updated it since last summer, but I don't perceive anything to have changed.
Okay. Can you send that out again?
Well, I would need to, I mean, it's been seven or eight months, so I would look at it. But can you be more explicit in your question?
Well, you're asserting that the, that you can operate and fundraise for the differences between what the town has budgeted year to year and the projected expenses. I have no idea what the projected expenses are. And with the interest of borrowing and additional costs in, in operations, I'm wondering how you're projecting that you'll cover the difference?
Right, I just said that we don't expect there to be a big increase in the cost of operations. And I explained that it was because we have both cost savings that we're going to make on things like energy and heating and cooling, which will be balanced against perhaps some increased cleaning costs and things like that. So we're not anticipating a big jump in the cost of operations. So I, I think that, that's the, the primary assumption here.
Are you putting solar panels on the roof or are you doing any?
We, we hope to. We're, you know, that's a, that's a function of, you know, further fundraising.
Did, did Mark Robbins, who is the town consultant, board of bed consultant, talk to you about that?
No, but, but we do have a lot of engineers from Kohler Ronan working on this and they've done a lot of energy modeling, which we've seen.
Okay.
There, there are a couple of different options and that determination hasn't been made yet, Neil. You can do things like owning and operating your own solar panels on your roof, which comes with an outlay on the beginning, but a savings later on, versus having a power purchase agreement where someone else installs and operates your solar and you get a discounted rate. So until we get closer to that time, we, we won't know which position we're in to, to do the solar.
Okay. Questions?
So is everybody comfortable with the fact that we have no backup or numbers? That realistically support that?
I, I thought we were talking about this year's operating budget.
Yeah, I mean, we're just talking about this year's operating budget. So, I mean, this is not, this is not a future building discussion. This is a typical annual budget meeting.
I see.
Yeah, I just, I think we broaden the liaison group because, you know, I was trying to drum up interest and find out who the liaison is. But I think you might be the only one from town council.
No, Penny's on and Sven.
And Rob and, and Sven are all there. But, um, but I think, again, I, I think there is plenty of backup, Christina. I've, I've sent you spreadsheets that, that show the projections. Last year, when you asked for them, when we were talking about the new building, you asked for them, I sent them out to the entire town council.
They were long in the project. So I would assume that any information you gave me a year ago would have been fine tuned. Those were approximate budgeted numbers. So now that you're at the point of being able to, you know, assert that, you know, this is a fact, I would like to see some supporting documentation.
And, and so, so that I'm clear, are, are you suggesting we're gonna do budgeting for annual operations differently in the future?
No, I'm not suggesting anything. I'm just, I just don't wanna assume that we're going, Neil asked a question about, you know, expenses and savings and projections of expenses and you replied to that. So my question is, what supporting information do you have? And I've been asking for that for a while, but I understand you don't wanna issue it at, at the point that I asked for it a year ago. But we are so close at this point that I like to see what those numbers are.
Lisa, as I recall, in your email that you sent out mid-summer, you did give supporting documentation with respect to utility costs and things of that sort, landscape. You might wanna just reforward that to Christina and she can look that over.
Yeah, I mean, since then, the energy modeling, there's been more energy modeling done by engineers. It'll take me some time to make sure that I can get the most up. There's no point, well, I can send what we sent last summer, but things have moved on. But, but, you know, it'll take some time to, to consult with other people to, to, to get those energy modeling costs. I'm, I'm very clear about the staffing, which as we've just said, is the lion's share of our costs. So, you know, I can tell you that we're not going to increase them. I'm not sure what the supporting documentation would be to, to back that up beyond me saying that the staffing cost, the staffing size will stay the same. As for the estimate I've had from the landscape guy, you know, I, I can provide you with his, his, his guesstimate, but he's working off of some drawings. So until we get further down the track, it's gonna be hard. I can't lock him into a quote that he's giving me based on drawings.
I, I don't wanna get into minutia. I'm not talking about landscaping as much as I'm talking about electrical and other services that you're bringing into the building. What is it that the costs are going to be? But if the conversation is just.
I'll get the modeling. I'll get the modeling. If, if it's, if it's energy, that, that's, that's good. That's the clarity I was looking for. What specifically were you wanting? So on energy modeling, we can easily do that. Last time that they were looking at this, we hadn't fine tuned exactly the HVAC. We've done considerable value engineering on the project and HVAC was one of the things that has changed. So I will find out what the current estimates on that energy modeling are and get back to you. But it was going to be significantly less than the $90,000 a year we currently spend on all heating, cooling and running of operations.
Thank you.
Yeah, in the budget meetings, you should probably anticipate this question will come up from the larger groups, the both the complete Board of Finance and complete town council. So some pro forma modeling on future operating costs are probably a good thing to have because that, this question is bound to come up in the larger group. Because it's one thing to prove this year's budget, but we know that the following year's budget will be different. And so it's only natural to expect that people will ask those questions.
Yeah, it's Penny, I have a question. Lisa, I know this is, this is current budget, but I'd like to suggest that you connect with Kevin in what your solar discussions have been and the direction you're going in, because there may be opportunities for partnership with the town, which would be beneficial to, you know, both the town and, and the library. So, you know, don't hold back on it because those discussions are ongoing with the town. So that's my suggestion to, you know, connect on, on the earlier side.
Okay, thanks very much, Penny.
Yeah, and I'll tell Mark Robbins again to pester you. How about the town subsidy rate? What you've done is definitely proved that you can live within the number that's dictated. But what's your personal opinion on it? You know, we are kind of like in the pack, I guess. You know, we're, our subsidies smaller than a lot of other towns, which is good or bad, I guess, depending on the, your perspective. But just if you were coming up with a plan, a library plan for a new, not, not a new capital project, but a new structure for the town, would you say we underfund our library? We adequately fund, we pragmatically fund?
Well, I, I think, I think that's a matter of perspective, obviously. So that's one thing. This is a matter of, of fact, not opinion. So we can look at where we fall in all of the towns in Connecticut. We could look at where we fall in all of the towns that have an association as opposed to a municipal library. There's different ways that we can find factual information to answer this question. We're certainly not at the top or anywhere close. We're below the 50% mark in terms of the rate at which town funds the library. But on the other hand, we do the best job in all of Connecticut, bar one, on fundraising. So we have employed, especially over the last five years, superb people to run our fundraising and we've been able to fill the gap better than anyone else. So again, not, not a straightforward black and white question to answer. Another way I could express this, Neil, is what I don't do, I don't draft the budget that will deliver the maximum, highest service level library that this community could have and then come to town and say, could I have 75% of that? And we'll raise the rest. That is not what I do.
Hey Neil, the, the one thing that I think Lisa's implying, I mean, if you look at filling the gap in the budget, it has to be done through fundraising. It puts enormous risk on the development team because every year, you know, we need to have a successful annual fundraise and even more importantly, you know, a, a successful literary lunch and any other big, major fundraising event. And in a given year like COVID or something else happens and we can't, you know, conduct those events, then, you know, it runs the risk of leaving a hole in our budget. So, you know, every year, our fundraising numbers keep creeping up and that's, that, that's a risk. So, you know, in theory, we would love to see a, a bigger town contribution as a percentage of the total budget.
Yeah, what's the idea of town contribution for, to have a library that you, a, you know, world-class library?
Well, i- in, in the association model, which is, which is very specifically from this region, if we wanted to look at some of, some of those others, we, we could, we could do, I could do some analysis and show you sort of what the, the, the top performing libraries have in the way of, of town support. But it's, it's around 80 to 85, I would say.
And we're.
But I, I, I would prefer to do the analysis and, 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 you know, get, get the detailed facts on that. But, you know, obviously, if it's a, if we were to figure out the budget that gives the best level of service to this community and then say, could you fund 80 to 85% of that? And we will fundraise for, not only for the balance, but for all of the capital repairs and maintenance as we do, then I think we would be delivering an exceptional level of service to our community. And, you know, that, that's where the question lies. What's, what's the level of service that we think the community requires, wants, needs of, of the library service?
Yeah. That's a good answer.
So Lisa, is, just to make sure we get an apples-to-apples comparison here. So you're going to exclude those libraries that are exclusively run by a municipality? And you're gonna go for the public-private partnership type libraries?
Well, if I were to do an analysis that included the municipal libraries, then by default, we would be well below the 50% mark because they are 100% funded by their, not just 100% of their operations, but their library buildings are owned, operated, maintained and repaired on the town's budget as well.
Right, so those are thrown out.
So we throw those out, but what's interesting is that among the association libraries, the range of what happens is vastly different. In our case, we are at the furthest arms length from town of all of the association libraries. In some cases, the town does support. Many of the association libraries have the town supporting. The ongoing maintenance of their building. In some cases, there's a co-ownership of the land or the building. There's all sorts of different things that happen, but if we look at simply operations budgets and only association libraries budgets. Then I think we'll get to some sort of analysis that gives you indication.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for coming to your liaison meeting. I apologize for the layer of meetings we have in town, but it does come up with an efficient product in the end. So I know it's a lot of work for you guys, and we look forward to the budget presentation to the board of hands. And for town council feels the same way. Any other comments? All right, thank you.
Thanks for putting it together, Neil.